...the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, September the third, two thousand and twenty-four. And welcome, everybody that's joined us here, from our city employees, our directors, and some of our general public, that's also, and also those who have joined us electronically this evening. We welcome you. I'm Mayor Guy Fugel, and I'll be conducting this evening. And we have all of our council members present. I don't know what mental state they are in, but they are present this evening. Anyway, we, uh, we'll start out with a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jensen, after which we'll have opening remarks by Councilmember Rogers.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered this evening, to consider some of the affairs of our city. We ask that thou bless us with understanding that we may seek thy will, and also those decisions that will most benefit the members of our community. Help us to be a beacon in our city to those around us of kindness and of understanding. Help us to have positive discourse, to help our city to be the best it can, to be safe, and to be accepting, and to be a place of refuge from other places that we see in the world. We're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy by living in this country, grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, grateful that we have the right to differing opinions. Help us to express those in a constructive and in a kind manner. And we ask for thy blessing in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Eric and Steve. We'll now move on to an ask for a motion for approval of tonight's meeting. Jen, I don't think we have any changes. So ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to item number five, our open session. Invite anybody to come forward at this time and address the council with any issues they'd like to bring to the...
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Aaron Alder. I live on Mahogany Lane. I'm grateful to the members of the Pleasant Grove City Council for allowing me to speak. And I have to read this. I know I've memorized. "I would like to express my concern regarding the increasing presence of electric motorcycles in our community, and in particular, in my case, on the trail behind my home going north from the Grove Creek Canyon parking lot, where pedestrians and pets are frequently present. While we appreciate the convenience..." Wait. "While we appreciated the convenience and use of electric bikes on the trails, electric motorcycles have become a significant nuisance and pose a safety risk to those, to both residents and animals. I'm seeking clarification on whether electric motorcycles are currently permitted in these areas." So that's a trail. That's a dirt trail behind my house. The sign at Grove Creek Canyon parking lot says, "No Motorized Vehicles." We've had a few riders state that they are permitted to ride on the trail, meaning that they believe these are not motorized vehicles. Regardless of the current regulations, I believe it is crucial to address this issue. The speed and potential danger these electric motorcycles present needs to be managed to maintain, to maintain the safety of our community. I'd be happy to discuss this concern further and explore potential solutions, such as updating the motorized vehicle sign that's there and/or regulations. Councilwoman, I guess, I don't know what you say, Diana Anderson, she, uh, she sent me a list that there are regulations, but I don't think the sign is very clear up there. I think, like I said, some people don't think that these motorized vehicles are actually vehicles or motorized, the electric ones. So updating the sign or regulations or laws to include restrictions on motorized, or electric motorcycles on this path. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to working together to ensure that our community remains a safe and enjoyable place for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We know we have a problem there, and if you would like to, Chief Brown would like to step out with you and just maybe clarify what the laws are and whatever. If you, would you do that, Chief, so you?
I think Dion as well.
And Dion.
Yeah.
You two.
Actually, Mayor, is there any way, because I'd like to know too. Could they come up for a second? Because I don't even know if I know what the rules are. Would that be okay to take a few minutes?
I don't think it's a problem for the staff to address. I know that specifically to, we had somebody come up talking about bikes on the streets, which I think is a little bit different what Aaron's talking about. He's talking about bikes on the trails. And so, we're, we're working on trying to figure out a way to define this. And so, but I don't, what I don't know, Dion, is do we specifically have issue with, I think with the motorized motorcycles, right? So whether we need to change a sign that is more clear, that's something that we can do. But we're also trying to define how this works for the rest of the city as well.
And how we enforce it.
Well, enforcement's going to be the hard part of all this, because we can put up all the signs we want. But enforcement on the trails, so whether that's getting police officers out there, or whether, you know, if we have a parks person out there, something that happens to be working, we can address some of that. So I think specifically, other than to answer the question, are motorized, uh, sorry, electric motorcycles are not allowed on the trail. So we needed to find that better on the sign. And then we're addressing the kind of the larger city issue, along with the enforcement side of that. So that doesn't necessarily answer questions. It answers one specific question, but not kind of the overall part of that. That's something we're still working on.
Okay. So it's a work in progress. So I think that's where we're at, and I think they'll come back with us and tell us where we're at.
Aaron, does that kind of get you where you need to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Anyone else like come forward?
And Aaron, the police chief is right there on the back with the, yeah.
Anyone else? I see no one else coming forward.
Mayor, can I just ask, is it possible, do we know what other regulations other cities have on e-bikes with regard to the trail?
That's part of what we're doing. Is we're...
So I just like a uniform code that maybe the string of cities that have to deal with this issue on, specifically on the Murdock Trail, maybe if we had a uniform?
Well, we, we had this discussion a while back on the Murdock, and we talked about three different classifications. I just don't know what the follow-up was.
Well, so you're talking two different things. He's talking about motorcycles. We're talking about e-bikes on the trail. So in regards to electronic, motorized, any kind of vehicle, bike, motorcycle, whatever, it's a problem with all the cities, and it's actually something we're talking about in our, in my Municipal Attorneys Association meeting. And a couple of cities have kind of let out and tried to find something and adopt some ordinances, but there isn't anything uniform yet. We're all trying to still figure it out, because the e-bikes do have different classes. Some, some of the e-bikes are not classified as motorized vehicles, and it's a little bit gray. Other ones are. So it's, it's a widespread issue that we're all trying to figure out right now. And so there will be, I'm positive, there will be some new regulations coming out. I think what the police department did today, posting about the Seron motorcycles, that was great.
Seron.
Seron. That was great public information, and, and I think that's part of what we need to do, is we need to start getting it out to the public, what is permitted and what's not, so that we can tell, tell them, hey, you, you know you're not supposed to be here on that type of a bike or in that type of a motorcycle.
Part of the challenge of this area where he's talking about is it's not in Pleasant Grove City proper either. It's on National Forest.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. That trail that he's talking about is the Bonneville Shoreline Trail or part of the acreage. Only a small portion is in Pleasant Grove City. And once it leaves near our tanks, it's in the National Forest.
So we may or may not even have jurisdiction.
Except for that they're riding their bike from their house to, their motorcycle from their house to the trail.
Yeah, I think pedestrians are at risk. So I appreciate you looking into that, Tina, because I, I think that having buy-in from multiple cities, so we can educate our police officers on how they can enforce and who they can enforce against, because like, once we start enforcing and kids start coming back with, with citations that may push their ability to get their license out until they're eighteen, things like that, I, I think at that point, parents might wake up and say, hey, maybe we can't have you riding around on our public roads on something that's dangerous.
And on sidewalks. Like they're riding them on the sidewalks.
Yeah, so obviously, there's a myriad of issues. Our intention would be to educate pretty heavily before we start issuing tickets. When we issue tickets to kids, a lot of times that's, I mean, if we need to do it, we'll do it.
Totally agree. I, I just want everyone to be safe.
But, you know, education campaign is the priority for us, and so we're still working on trying to put something together that we can, we can use.
So the young driver, not experienced, on a quiet vehicle going forty miles an hour.
Oh, yeah. It's an issue.
This is a serious issue, and I really do want to get on top of it as fast as possible.
Yeah. And like with all issues, we want parents to engage. I mean, I'm a parent. I don't get to track my kids.
A ten thousand dollar, but how long are we thinking before we have anything in place?
Well, it's going to take a month at least. It's on my, it's on my Municipal Attorneys Association agenda to discuss at our meeting this month.
Okay.
And so, and I did get a couple of referrals for cities that are dealing with it in Salt Lake County. So I'll be pulling theirs to see what they have. But in terms of coordination, it'll, it'll be discussed this month, and then it'll take a couple of weeks to get something put together.
Okay. Would this be a legislative, a state legislative decision?
Well, I mean, they can change the traffic code. You know what I mean? They, they could do something at the state legislative level to make it more clear, to increase the penalties or whatever, but...
I, I haven't heard if the legislature has this on their radar. I think most cities are...
Tyler.
Well, most cities are trying to deal with it on their own, but what Tina's saying is we're trying to be somewhat uniform with what the other cities are doing. So we're not out in left field if we decide we're going to do this. We want to be pretty consistent so that a resident can look at us and say, okay, they're, they're doing what they need to do, which is consistent with what else is going on.
And there really are already regulations in place. It's just nobody knows them, and no one's following them.
Right.
So that's where my, I'm thinking that we really need to do a public education program where we're like, okay, if you have this kind of an e-bike, this is where you can ride. This is what, this is what the regulations are. If you have this kind of a motorcycle, this is what the regulations are. So, because there are regulations in place, it's just a matter of nobody really understands the difference in what they can and can't do.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now close our open session, bring it back up here to the council. And thank you for all your remarks, and we'll move on to item number six. Our consent items for this evening consist of, A, to consider for approval, payment number three for AW Wolf Construction LLC for the 200 West, 400 North to Center Street Waterline and Roadway Construction Project. B, to consider for approval, payment number nine, to Hydrovac Excavation for the Pressurized Irrigation Meters Installation Project. C, consider for approval, payment number two to Cody Eckert Construction Incorporated for the Boulevard Well Site Street Crossing Project. And D, to consider for approval, Contract Change Order Number Three for Kilgore Contracting for the Nathaniel Drive Waterline and Roadway Improvement Project. E, to consider for approval, payment number four to Kilgore Contracting for the Nathaniel Drive Waterline and Roadway Improvement Project. F, to consider for approval, Change Order Number Two to the J. Lynn Roberts and Sons Incorporated for the Boulevard Well Facilities Project. G, to consider for approval, payment number five to J. Lynn Roberts and Sons Incorporated for the Boulevard Well Product, Well Facilities Project. And H, to consider for approval, payment number two to the Eagle Environmental Incorporated for the Asbestos and Hazardous Materials Removal Project. And I, to consider for approval, payment number five to J. Lynn Roberts and Sons Incorporated for the Chlorination System Insulation Atwood Well, Gibson Well, Anderson Well, and the Adams Well Project. And J, to consider for approval, payment number nine to Big D Construction for the Cook Family Park Project. And K, to consider for approval, payment reports for August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, and August twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four. Now, after going over these, I think we've got a lot going on in our community here, especially being overseen by our Public Works Director and his staff. And so it's been a busy summer, and will continue to be. So with that, I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from consent item A because I'm related to the owner of AW Wolf Construction.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent items as read by you.
We have a, we have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on. We don't have any board commissioner committee appointments this evening or presentations. And we'll move right on to our public hearings, which we have two this evening. And nine A, a public hearing to consider for, consider a resolution, two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three eight, authorizing the mayor to sign an access agreement for ingress and regress in favor of the trust for public lands for property located approximately two hundred south and seventeen fifty east, parcel number fourteen zero four four zero zero nine four, Pleasant Grove, Utah County, Utah, providing for an effective date. Turn time over to our council.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you put that up for me, Tyler? As mentioned in the work session, the Trust for Public Lands is acquiring a large acreage that currently belongs to the Nymer family at the top of Battle Creek on the south side of two hundred south. There you go. And the shaded area that you can see is an area that we have been using as two hundred south for however many years it's been paved. However, that piece of property was never actually deeded to the city or dedicated through a subdivision plat. So in the Trust for Public Lands minds and in the U.S. Forest Service minds, they were not, they wanted to make sure that we considered it a public road, which we do pursuant to the state statute. If it's been used for over ten years by the public, it automatically becomes a public highway. However, if you can see the lot that says Pleasant Grove City...
There's a pointer there, Tina.
There we go. So this little corner right here, Pleasant Grove City, and this piece right here, there's a little bit of a gray area outside the borderline of where the road is. And then right here, again, up here on the zero zero nine five. And then, when the deal is done, this will be a revised parcel number, and it will have this new parcel number, fourteen zero four four zero zero three two. So the access easement is so that this is considered, even though it's not part of the roadway, that we will allow the U.S. Forest Service access on that little shaded part, this little shaded part, and then any part of this up here. Again, like I mentioned in the work session, the easement will not be recorded until the completed property switches have happened, the acquisition. The city will be buying a portion of the property. The U.S. Forest Service will be buying a portion of the property. This is mostly a belt and suspenders approach for the U.S. Forest Service. They did not want to pay the Trust for Public Lands for the property and then have a problem with access. So this is basically a comfort easement for them. I think they would have had access anyway, but we're just making sure that they feel comfortable, that they know they're going to have access once all of the property acquisition is completed.
Anybody have any questions?
Do all those little squiggly lines, does that look like nineteen thirty's silent film movie?
I think that's just you. I don't even know what you're talking about.
So, so is the easement dedicated to public use or only to the Forest Service for use?
No, it's, well, it's, right now, the easement is in favor of the Trust for Public Lands for ingress and egress. And then, once it transfers to the U.S. Forest Service, it'll be for the same thing, not necessarily for the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council on resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three eight. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing, bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three eight as discussed and as read by you.
Second. So that was Eric. You seconded it?
Yeah.
Yep. So we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember Jensen. And we will start out with a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move on to our second public hearing and our last one this evening for nine B, a public hearing to consider for, consider an ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four dash zero two one, amending the official zoning map of Pleasant Grove City, rezoning approximately point three eight acres of property located approximately thirteen thirty north, one hundred east from R-110, single-family residential zone to the RR Rural Residential Zone, Pleasant Grove City is the applicant. And turn time over to Director Cardenas.
Okay, Mayor. This, Mayor, council, this is an aerial view of the area where the subject property is. We have Discovery Park right here, and the property that we're going to discuss is this property right here. Okay? It's a, a large property, and we're going to refer to it as the big lot property. Okay? So in, what's that, May twenty-first of this year, so just recently, we, the, the city council approved a rezone to go from the rural residential to the R-110. Actually, I'm going to show you guys another map that I did right here. This is what we approved. We approved, all of this, this rectangle right here was green, and we approved to section this area to rezone it from the green one to the yellow one, from the rural residential to the R-110. The reason why we did it is because at the time, we, we were working with the applicant for a subdivision. This is a good image. This is an image of how staff reviews a plat. So all those red stuff right there start the comments that the staff puts on, on a plat. As you guys can see, on that subdivision, you guys can, we can take a look at it and see that they were proposing to do a new lot right here. So we had a new lot that will front to one hundred east. So we were working with the applicant doing that. That's the reason why he applied for the rezone, because this lot was only going to be ten thousand square feet lot. Then, on May, we rezoned it to R-110. It is, it's very similar to the surrounding areas. Okay? However, the, this application didn't end up happening as, there was some situation that the applicant is working with the county to have access for two lots from one hundred east, and that's not happening anymore. So that plat that we're looking at it is not happening anymore as we, I'm going to show you guys what we are working on right now. Okay? So it's going to, like, only going to be one big lot. Okay? So it's not going to have that frontal lot and the flag lot in the back anymore. Okay? So since we're not having this lot, this little ten thousand square feet lot, and since having a split zoning without lot boundaries in the zone is not best planning principles, the staff submitted an application to revert the, the rezone to go back from the R-110 to, so this is what we're doing, to go from, from, from the R-110 to the rural residential, to have it all green like that. Okay?
What about the east lot?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so what happened is that the, in the, in the application that, that we're reviewing right now, or in the plat that we're reviewing, if we take a look, they're proposing to make this lot smaller as well.
Okay.
Because Grandma doesn't want to mow this lawn right there, and she wants to have a garden for the people right here eventually. So that's what they're doing. So pretty much what we're, what we're doing is, there's the best planning principles, that a zone boundary follows property lines, and that's what we're doing. Kind of like a cleanup type of situation right here. Okay, we took this item to the planning commission, and they forward unanimous recommendation of approval for the rezone from the, from the R-110 of this rectangle, this square right here, and this rectangle to the rural residential zone to leave it all green right here. If the applicant eventually decides to, to go through another subdivision or something like that, he'll have to go through a similar process. At this point, it's not going to happen in the near future. Okay? That's what I have, Mayor and council.
Any questions for Daniel?
No.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. With that, we'll now open our public hearing for ordinance number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero two one, and invite anybody to come forward on, about amending this zoning map. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing, bring it back up to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash twenty-one, amending the official zoning map of Pleasant Grove City, rezoning approximately point two eight acres of property located approximately thirteen thirty north, one hundred east from R-110, single-family residential zone to the RR Rural Residential Zone, Pleasant Grove City is the applicant.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. And we will start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll now move on to our, our one action items this evening. Ten A, to consider for adoption, resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three nine, for the governing body of Pleasant Grove City authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Mountain Land Head Start Incorporated for the real property located at four eighty-five west, two twenty south, suite one hundred, Pleasant Grove, Utah. And turn time back over to our council.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As explained in the work session, this is basically the Head Start building that's located on, near our rodeo grounds and near our Will's Park softball fields. And we have had a lease agreement with them since two thousand and seventeen. It has expired. The term of this lease commences on today's date of two thousand and twenty-four and goes through September of two thousand and twenty-nine. They will pay a rent of five thousand five hundred dollars annually, which is an increase of one thousand dollars from the, the prior period. And they have already paid their lease amount under the old lease for this year, so their next payment will not be due until, until two thousand and twenty-five. The use of the premises is for the Head Start Program, a preschool and early education program, and also a sublease of a portion of one of the classrooms in order for a early childhood development daycare and preschool to offer extended hours to the patrons of the Head Start Program. The maintenance, we are in charge of the maintenance for the building that we own. They are in charge of the maintenance for the building they own. Indemnification, as I mentioned before, we are to be listed as additional insured, insureds on their property policies. And then, there's a six hundred dollar a month utility fee that's included in, in the rental amount. Any questions?
Questions, council? No, thank you. And with that, if there's any other questions from the council, we ask for a motion. And with that, if there's any other questions from the council, we ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-039 as discussed.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember Jensen. And we will start out with the council, a roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. That concludes all of our...
We need to sign the consent.
Oh, yeah, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
It's buried in the paperwork somewhere. So anyway, I've got a pretty big stack of...
Checking off on my...
Payment requests. Yeah. Thank you. So that, and I'll turn to our city administrator. Do you have anything else we need to cover this evening?
Sir.
Okay. And I'm giving, I'm giving the council one last time to make any former statement.
No.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I just want to say, between the library and Head Start, our community and Tabitha's Way all coming together today, I think it's awesome, all of the services that we have in Pleasant Grove and that we're, I, I just think, I feel like we're a great community member to, to sponsor these programs, and I'm, I'm proud that we do that.
I don't know that PG cares. I mean, there's just so many things.
That's great.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. With that, we are, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do I have a second?
Second.